Okay. A quorum, Mr. President, I will now call this meeting to order. It's 5:45 PM. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. So I'll turn the floor to Dr. Sonya Nizey, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, who will present a budget workshop.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
So, tonight is whenever we start our discussions. I'm looking forward to our plans for the 2022-23 budget. So, I'm going to start out first and review with you where we're at for 21-22, and then we'll move into looking at our projections and what they look like for 22-23. So, I'm going to start out with talking about 21-22. And when, I'm going to reflect back about whenever we adopted the budget and where we were at at that time. So, again, we entered another year with several unknowns. And so, at that time, we relied on information that we had received from the Harris County Appraisal District. And what we believed at that time was that we would have property values of approximately $10.1 billion. And since then, we receive role corrections in on a monthly basis. Our property values have leveled out around $9.97 billion. So, just a slight decline from where we were originally projected to be. However, the biggest impact to revenues that we've seen this year involves our student enrollment and the percentage of attendance of the students that are enrolled. So, when we first adopted the budget, we had projected at that time that we would have a flat enrollment level. And at that time, we were thinking that we would have 20,695 in our average daily attendance. And that's what we projected our budget based on. However, since then, what we are actually experiencing is a decline of about 500 students from last year and a lower attendance level than what we had expected. So, if you looked at where we were projected to be at, it would be 19,508, which is a substantial reduction from the average daily attendance that we were anticipating. However, we were fortunate to receive a word on March 29th that we are going to have an adjustment from the state. And they are going to look at the first four weeks of actual attendance for the current year. And then they're going to go back to the 1920 year. And they're going to look at the first four, six weeks of attendance during those periods. And if we had a higher attendance level in 1920, then they will adjust the current year. So, that's what we are working off of that information currently. The state has given us a factor that we can use. And we have a template that's been provided to us by Texas Association of School Board officials. We're using that template and Omar Garcia's revenue projections. And we've adjusted our numbers. And luckily, we're going to see an increase in revenue from where we thought we would be, to the tune of about $4.5 million. So, the adjusted ADA number that we're using, which is the key number that's used in the state aid formula, it's 19,914. So, again, this adjustment, it assists us with the situation involving low attendance of the students. But it doesn't assist us with the reduction in the enrollment. That's been, it's a little over 500 students at this point. In addition, we're seeing some property value protest on some commercial accounts, which is causing us to make an adjustment to what we believe that we'll be collecting on our tax revenue. Now, on the state, on the general operating side, our maintenance and operations side, for every dollar that we reduce in collections, we usually receive state aid. So, it's an offset there. Where it really impacts us is in our debt service fund. But we have worked those adjustments into the projections. Now, on the expenditure side, the big changes have been, we've received a lot of ESER money, to the tune of $87 million. And we are currently, and I'll talk a little bit more about ESER later. And then I actually have some financial information for you to look at related to ESER and what the district is using that money for. But we are using some of the ESER money to assist us with some projects that we would typically fund in the general fund. And we're continually evaluating that as we're moving through the year. We've been receiving feedback from different stakeholder groups and making adjustments based on what we're seeing with student needs and also enrollment. We also had a number of vacant and unfilled positions. And again, this was about $4.5 million worth of positions that were included in the adopted budget, but they had not been filled. So, we have some savings in our payroll costs. And then we also have federal revenue increases, and that again is related to ESER. So, with ESER, we're able to recover indirect costs that help us with the cost to administer those funds. So, those are some positives that have happened to us on our expenditure side. So, here's our 21-22, just budget versus actual where we believe that we're at right now. When we adopted the budget, it was a deficit of about $3.1 million. When we take into consideration the adjustment from the state for low attendance, and then take into consideration our vacant positions. And, you know, on our expenditure side, I want to say that we always look at this with a conservative estimate and assume that most of our campuses and departments will deplete the majority of the money that's been allocated to them. And if so, then we would have a change in our fund balance of a little over a million dollars. So, it's a little, little more positive than what it looked like at the beginning of the year. So, that's where we're at now. So, now moving forward for 22-23, what we're doing on average daily attendance, which again is the key factor that we use in the state aid projection template, is we are assuming that our enrollment will remain flat from where it currently is. We've adjusted the attendance to assume that we'll have 95% attendance, which was a little lower than what we typically experienced pre-COVID. Tax rate compression is still in place because of House Bill 3. So, there's a slight adjustment to the maintenance and operations here, rate here, which is required by law. So, overall, the tax rate would just decrease very slightly over where it's currently at. So far, we have not included any new positions in our projections. But what we have included in them are some compensation modeling. We use Texas Association of School Boards to help us with this. And our HR department works with them. And so far, what we have had them project for us is two options. We've looked at the cost of a 2% of midpoint pay increase for our teachers and also a 3% of general pay increase. Our beginning teacher pay with the 2% would go to $62,025 with the option to $62,750. There's a minimum increase with the 3% of $2,200 for each teacher who returns to Galena Park next year. We also have in here some equity adjustments. We have a little bit of a situation with our years, our more senior year, 17, and up to about year 25, that we have worked in some adjustments to give some equity to some, our more experienced teachers. And again, that's $275,000. So, I've got the, the increases here for the teachers with the equity adjustments. And then the total compensation increases. I've included in here the approximate increase for all other staff. So, it's about a $1.6, $1.7 million difference, whether it's a 2% general pay increase or a 3% general pay increase. And we do have an action item later on tonight's board meeting agenda to possibly approve a 3% general pay increase. And we only have presented it this time for teachers. So, we just want to present the teacher pay scale at this point in time and then have some more time to go back and look further at compensation for other staff members. And then also look at position requests and, and again, our ESER funding. So, so right now, if you look at 22-23 and you use, again, this average daily attendance that I've talked about that would be level, and then you include in here the two general pay increases that I just reviewed, the 2% general pay increase and the 3% general pay increase, you can see what the projected deficit would be at that. Now, what's still in here, we still have a number of vacant positions. And they're, they are there at this time because we haven't finished the process in the current year of looking at the requests that have been given to us for next year. And again, we're also still in the process of evaluating the ESER money and trying to figure out the best way to use the ESER money to assist us with the general fund. But then we don't want to create a funding cliff once those funds all go away in a couple of years. So, we're trying to balance those two, two needs and figure out the best way to, to move through that. So, we will receive updated property values from Harris County Appraisal District later this month, April 25th. We also are awaiting our insurance, our TRS active care rates. We will have those once the Teacher Retirement System Board meets. At, on April 28th, they're expected to approve those rates. So, we'll know what those are coming and going into the summer months. We also have tonight the teacher general pay increase and the adjustments to the teacher pay scale. And then those would impact anybody that's paid off of the teacher pay scale. We're going to continue looking at these revenues and expenditures. And again, looking at any new positions, requests that have been given to us. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring back general pay increase for the remaining staff members. It may be the May, but may not be until the June meeting. And that's typically when the board has adopted the compensation plan, is at the regular June meeting. We won't have a final adoption of this budget until later in August. And then, at that time, we have to hold a public hearing. And it's mandated by law. And then after we adopt the budget, then the board could adopt the tax rate. We've typically held off on that until October because sometimes there's been some delays with the Harris County Appraisal District on, on values. So, on ESER, I've, again, I've put it each one of your places. Ms. Valdez helped me with making sure that you had copies of the, the two primary ESER funds that we are looking at spending right now. We have the, the ESER 3, which is approximately $60 million in money. And I've detailed on that chart. You can see what's being allocated for payroll, what's being allocated for supplies and materials, and then other costs. And then on the ESER 2, that one's the smaller award. That one's approximately $27 million. A lot of that has been for HVAC and technology purchases directly for students and for staff. And then a lot of instructional materials and curriculum enhancements that are incorporated into the ESER 2. So, at this time, I will see if you have any questions for me.
Sonya?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you go over the, I don't understand the whole harness reduction from TEA. Can you just briefly go over that again for me?
So, last year on ESER 2, what the state did was, there was a certain amount of state aid that they gave to us for the low attendance related to ESER. And so, what they did was they withheld some of the federal money to compensate the state. And so, for Galena Park, that $939,000 was what they withheld from the ESER money to reimburse the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Dr. Nizey. There being no other business before the board at this time, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:59 PM. We'll start the regular meeting at 6 o'clock. The Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, April 11th, 2022, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is 14705 Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, 77015. The time is 6 o'clock PM. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. Then management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We do have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is, this is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per Policy Board, BED Local, may address the board regarding matters of concern or interest to the district other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions and opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of speakers. And please understand that a lack of a response from board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The board Vice President, Adrian Stevens, will be the designated timekeeper. A representative from the Nassau Alumni League is here with a public comment. You want to please step forward?
Good evening. It's very nice to meet all of you guys tonight. Thank you very much for inviting us to come and present to you today. And thank you also so much for supporting STEM education. Of course, as our Nassau Alumni League is very much interested in promoting STEM, we need more young, bright minds out there in the STEM careers. And we are happy to present this check. Of course, you've gotten the real check, but this is our really nice, big Publishers Clearinghouse type check for you guys. And we're looking forward to hearing how these funds are getting put to good use. And we don't want to take too much of your time since we do want to get some pictures as well. Thank you so much, on behalf of all of our members.
Thank you. Wow, wow. Wow, wow. Thank you again, Nassau Alumni League. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Board Member, Board Vice President Adrian Stevens. And the pledges to the American and Texas flags will be led by Cunningham Middle School. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags.
Lord, thank you for this day. We give all praises and honor to you, God. Lord God, thank you for the blessing us with a wonderful staff, awesome teachers, magnificent administrators, and fantastic students. Lord God, please grant the board discernment to make the best decisions for the district and place a hedge of protection around our GP ISD family. Amen.
Amen.
Forward, march. The, 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 uh, the, march down, march. Colors, hold. The face, present colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever. And with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, my select, unified, and individual.
Order, colors. Face, move. All, colors. Present, arms. Order, arms. Forward, arms.
Thank you, Cunningham Middle School. We now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
All right, Mr. Miller, will you join me? Greetings. I hope everybody's having a wonderful day. I was recruiting teachers today, so we need to be very thankful for the teachers we have. It was a tough day. There's not many people out there for us to find. Just so y'all know, I was the guy doing it today. So, uh, but the good news is we have a bunch of great teachers already here. So, we're just going to work on keeping all of them.
Good evening. Dr. Moore and the Board of Trustees would like to recognize Coach John K. Coach K, please join us on the stage. Coach K has been named the 2021 Dave Campbell Texas Football 6A Coach of the Year. This recognition was awarded to Coach K for leading the North Shore Mustangs to their fourth state championship in his eight seasons at the helm. Congratulations, Coach K. We are so proud of you. Next, we will recognize the Galena Park ISD's Business Services Department. Representing the department tonight are Dr. Sonya Hidershak-Nizey, Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support and Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ida Schultz, Executive Director for Finance and Treasury, Ms. Amika Williams, Executive Director for Business Support Services, and Ms. Adrian Salome, Director for Purchasing. Please join us on stage. Our Business Services Department has received the 2021-2022 Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, the merit, the award merit for purchasing operations from the Texas Association of School Business Officials, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. We are incredibly thankful for the Business Services Department's commitment to ensure Galena Park ISD continues the highest ethical standards in the areas of fiscal stewardship, transparency, management, and accountability. Our students, staff, and community are always at the forefront of the decisions made in this department. And tonight's awards are a testament of their dedication to the success of Galena Park ISD. Thank you for your devotion to the GP ISD family. Now, we will recognize members of- Senior John Michael Kentu. Senior Aleja Hunter. Mohamed Khan. And Mia Pinha. The principals of these students, would you please join us on stage for a photo? Students selected to serve on the advisory board meet with Dr. Moore and other district leaders throughout the year to provide feedback related to important student, school, and community issues. SAB members are respected campus and community leaders with valuable perspec-- excuse me, valuable perspectives who serve as ambassadors to help spread the great things happening in Galena Park ISD. Tonight, we present these leaders with a certificate to recognize the students for their participation and support in the important school-community partnership and giving back to their schools and community. Thank you for all you do. You make Galena Park ISD a great place to be. Mr. Pearson, you need to get. Pearson, get on the end. Yeah, one of the ends. This concludes tonight's recognition portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Anyone have a comment? Okay, none. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand. Whoops, I forgot one thing. Dr. Christopher Pishon, Executive Director for School Administration and Principal Development, will present the academic spotlight with a video highlighting the Aspiring Administrator Academy and the opportunities the academy provides for future GP ISD administrators. Dr. Pishon? Sorry about that.
Not a problem. President Miller, trustees, superintendent Dr. Moore, and cabinet, good evening. Again, I am Chris Pishon, the Executive Director for School Administration and Principal Development. Tonight, I stand before you to recognize and spotlight the Aspiring Administrators Academy and the phenomenal opportunities afforded to these aspiring leaders by the district. We have several of our candidates here tonight, so at this time, I ask them to please stand to be recognized. Thank you, team. You may be seated. Tonight's presentation is a video which highlights key components of the program as well as the tremendous opportunities they have in store for these outstanding individuals. Please, please enjoy the presentation. Greetings, Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. John Moore, Cabinet, District Staff, and Community. I am Chris Pishon, Executive Director for School Administration and Principal Development, and I am super excited to have this opportunity to enlighten you on an amazing program we have in the district, the Aspiring Administrators Academy, affectionately known as AAA. As the leader of this academy, let me provide some background on this professional learning experience. The purpose of the AAA Academy is to establish an infrastructure of success, a succession plan for a district's campus-level leadership role. AAA is a two-year program consisting of one-year and two-year candidates. Upon selection into the academy, these aspiring leaders meet monthly to gain treasured knowledge and skills, shadow current assistant principals, complete campus leadership projects, experience mock interviews, and panel discussions, plus much, much more. The academy centers on three primary focuses: leadership development and capacity building, district and campus enhancement, and administrative support and service.
Hi, I'm Patrick Perez-McMahon, one of the assistant principals at North Shore Middle School, home of the champions. Participating in the Aspiring Administrators Academy program was a great privilege and an opportunity that greatly developed my capacity as a leader, both as a teacher and now as an administrator. I was given the tools, strategies, and confidence I needed to be able to step up and be successful in a variety of different leadership roles. As a new assistant principal in the district, AAA helped prepare me in a variety of different ways. It helped give me the opportunity to meet with, be recognized by, and learn from different leaders and administrators in the district.
Hello, I'm Lee Ramirez, principal at Galena Park Middle School. I am extremely grateful and appreciate the Aspiring Administrators Academy. As a school principal, it has been essential in helping me to build capacity on our campus. The academy teaches these future leaders about topics that help them to support our campus instantly. Right now, I have three teachers in the program, and I currently use each of them around campus, helping us with various administrative duties such as after-school events, monitoring school hallways, and filling in for administrators when needed.
So far, the Aspiring Administrators Academy has been phenomenal for me. It has taught me all roles of what it means to be a true leader and how to perform those duties by being a servant every single day that I walk into the workplace.
Overall, AAA works both ways. As candidates, help the school by adding leadership capacity, and we help them by providing valuable school leadership experience. I firmly believe that the AAA program is extremely beneficial, and I am so happy that the district invests in its future leaders.
Hello, I'm Dr. Lisa Hamblin, the proud principal of Harvard Elementary. GP ISD has established many professional learning networks to provide school leaders and practitioners the space to learn and share knowledge with each other. Second-year AAA members are responsible for projects that are intended to further their leadership skills and knowledge. Building the knowledge and skills of all staff members is a crucial component of building organizational capacity.
Hello, my name is Addie Blackshire. I serve as a 4th and 5th grade math and science teacher at Harvard Elementary School, as well as the team leader for 5th grade. As an aspiring administrator, I am excited to share how this academy serves to enhance district and campus success. At Harvard, my AAA Year Two project focuses on a Harvard Masterclass where aspiring leaders on our campus can gain extensive knowledgeable and great nuggets regarding their desired future endeavors. We discuss topics such as tips and tricks from current administrators, number talk in regards to dissecting data, and show me the money with budgeting tips and the importance of accurate record-keeping. We even had our very own superintendent, Dr. John Moore, join us for our Masterclass. Leading this AAA project has given me the opportunity to build my leadership capacity, enhance the skill sets of my colleagues, and provide access to a network of district leaders.
The Aspiring Administrators Academy supports the further development of the culture of learning established in GP ISD.
Hi, I'm Sharon Amador, and this is my second year in the academy. This program has helped expand my leadership skills. I've shadowed assistant principals and gained insight into their routines, challenges, and problem-solving skills. An important lesson I've learned is that an assistant principal's devotion to their school is essential to the success of the campus. My Year Two project was to provide administrative support to the district. I'm currently working with the Director of School Culture, and my project is focusing on the district's foundations committees. I've been collecting and analyzing data, creating spreadsheets, monitoring campus meetings, and providing guidance to build stronger campuses.
Hello, I'm Dr. Wally Johnson, Deputy Principal at North Shore Senior High School. Galena Park ISD aspiring administrators academy members assisted North Shore Senior High School by providing additional layer of security and administrative support at high-profile football games. At the campus level, the AAA program has made a significant impact in the day-to-day operations of the campus. At North Shore Senior High School, AAA members participate in think-tank sessions addressing campus issues such as discipline, student attendance, and mental health. The AAA program is a phenomenal program in Galena Park ISD. May the mission continue within this phenomenal district.
As you have heard, the Aspiring Administrator Academy is a dynamic program with tremendous benefits for candidates, campuses, and the district. We are an academy that is not just selling for excellence, we are striving for greatness. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a comment. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for leaders to participate in. How many are currently participating now?
Right now, we have 20 candidates.
Twenty.
Eleven Year Twos, and eleven Year Ones, and nine Year Twos.
And, okay, wonderful. And it's a two-year program?
Correct.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Pishon. It was an excellent presentation.
We just thank you, trustees, and Dr. Moore, as well as my supervisors, Dr. Giaccone and Dr. Harris, for supporting this program and allowing me to lead it, our AAA candidates for their hard work and dedication, as well as ensuring that we come together as a team to grow aspiring leaders across the district. Also want to end by just thanking our outstanding communications team for putting together such an amazing video. Thank you, guys. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. There are continuing education requirements for all school board members. So tonight, I, Jeff Miller, the board president, will report on Galena Park Independent School District Board members' continuing education credits this year. Topic One, Special Required Training. All board members have completed the Topic One requirement. Trainings that fell under Topic One consist of cybersecurity, update to the Texas Education Code, child abuse prevention, and evaluating and improving student outcomes. Under Topic Two, Team Building, all board members and Dr. John Moore have completed the Topic Two requirement. Topic Three, Additional Continuing Education. Jeff Miller and Herbert Sanchez have completed the Topic Three requirements, and Adrian Stevens, Noe Esparsa, Wanda Johnson, and Ramon Garza, and Norma Hernandez have exceeded the Topic Three requirements. Next, we have Dr. Harold Sonny Fletcher, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction. He's going to provide a 2016 bond program construction update. Sonny?
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Miller, board, Dr. Moore, and cabinet. Real quick, we'll get through, and I believe I promised we'd have pictures of steel in the air, and we do. Great news to see, that metal deck there on the second floor for the floor, they intend to pour concrete next week, so we'll see buildings really coming together nicely. Happy with that. And then, on Galena Park High School, promised we've got that out for competitive sealed proposal for the roadway relocation. Got an agenda item later for inter-local agreement. The city approved that, so that's part of that package for that. And then we'll have, the building will be going out for competitive sealed proposal here in a couple of months. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Sonny. We now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve a 3% midpoint general pay increase for employees tied to the teacher's pay scale?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve a 3% midpoint general pay increase for employees tied to the teacher pay scale as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ramon Garza and a second by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. With respect to the construction agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
We have a motion by Norma Hernandez and a second by Ramon Garza. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Esparsa, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
We have a motion by Noe Esparsa and a second by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. Dr. Sonya Nysey, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented one, comparative tax collection report for the period of September the 1st through February the 28th for fiscal years 2020 to 2021, and 2021 to 2022. Then the general fund budget summary report for the period of September the 1st, 2021, through February the 28th, 2022. And then the 2016 bond program financial report is of February the 28th, 2022. Mrs. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent, what, did I forget, missed one? Oh, Dr. Nysey also gave us a donation report for March 2022. Can't seem to see with my glasses on today. Mrs. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented early Head Start 2021 to 2022 Self-Assessment and Action Plan. Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes from February 2022. That passes six to nothing with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the amended order of election for the May 7, 2022 Galena Park ISD trustee election to reflect updated election staff and Harris County Voting Precinct numbers?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the amended order of election for the May 7, 2022 Galena Park ISD trustee election as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
We have a motion made by Wanda Johnson and a second by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. Now for the general consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the general consent agenda?
I, Noe Esparsa, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
We have a motion by Noe Esparsa and a second by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. With respect to the construction agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
We have a motion by Norma Hernandez and a second by Ramon Garza. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Esparsa, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
We have a motion by Noe Esparsa and a second by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? That passes six to nothing with no abstentions. The following documents were presented to the Board for information. Dr. Sonja Nize, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented one, comparative tax collection report for the period of September the 1st through February the 28th for fiscal years 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2022. Then the general fund budget summary report for the period of September the 1st, 2021 through February the 28th, 2022. And then the 2016 bond program financial report as of February the 28th, 2022. Mrs. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent, what, did I forget, missed one? Oh, Dr. Nize also gave us a donation report for March 2022. Can't seem to see with my glasses on today. Mrs. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented early head start 2021 to 2022 self-assessment and action plan, the early head start policy council meeting minutes from February 2022, and the early head start update and fund 205 expenditure report summary from February of 2022. An executive session of the Board will now be held and the matters contained in the notice for this meeting is authorized by Sections 551.001 through Section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting, or at a subsequent public meeting of the Board upon notice thereof, as the Board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the Board will now be held at 6:33 PM.